Justin, we do have a quorum. Amber hasn't joined the Zoom yet, but you can proceed when you want.
You got five clock by your time?
Almost. Oh, Amber just got here, actually. So one moment.
You have.
Seconds, seconds. Okay, Justin.
All right, I will call to report January 18, 2024, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Polk City to order. Item two, roll call.
Hankins?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Bowersocks?
Here.
Pregnants?
Here.
Sires?
Yes. Item three, approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. You have a motion and a second, Justin?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, motion passes. Item four, approval of P&amp;Z Commission meeting minutes for November 20th, 2023?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the P&amp;Z Commission meeting from November 20th, 2023.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, motion passes. Item five, Home State Bank Site Plan Amendment. So Jenny, can you tell me who's present to speak? Are we just going to go in the order of developer and?
Yep, just go in the order of the agenda.
All right.
Go to even still?
Yes.
Okay.
I just faced it as a square.
Really throwing me off. I'm a speaking nurse at all time max. Trent Smith, McLaurin Engineering, address is 1360 Northwest 104th Street, 5 Iowa. I am the civil consultant on the project. And I'll kind of do a recap, and I'm sure Travis will do something similar as I had to be. But first and foremost, want to apologize that we're here in the first place. You know, no one wants to be on a snowy night to talk about trees being removed. And so I just kind of want to open up with that. We have a great project at the corner of a bridge in Third Street. And as everyone has seen by the building that Home State Bank has built, none of landscaping is up, obviously, because it's winter. But I think when the project is built to completion, it's going to look really good as a feature piece on the kind of north entryway in Polk City. So in December, just kind of recap what has been done since this all kind of started. So in December, we found that some trees were being removed that were originally called out on the site. If we were to do any removals in that area, it would be required that we show them on our site plan, our original site plan or the amendment one. There were no removals to be called out. The intention was to just clean out some of the brush, whether it's from the derecho or the original subdivision construction. And there was an overstep. And the city notified us of that overstep. It was December 18th, if I remember right. And we quickly got to work because that's, you know, certainly unsettling to the neighbors, I'm sure, especially when there's no resolution. So our goal was to come up with a quick and solid, sound plan that hopefully we can go through tonight, or I expect to go through tonight and kind of bring everyone up to speed. So after December 18th, the construction team and city staff met on site to kind of walk through what has been removed. After that walkthrough, we had a sit down with Chelsea and Travis where we walked through. There is a penalty in the zoning code already for illegal trees that are removed and walked through. The trees that were identified as, you know, not called out in the site plan and deemed an illegal removal. After that, we had an arborist on site to identify, you know, what trees should have been removed based on proximity to other trees that would have helped the growth. If they're located kind of on that creek invagment, really any items deemed hazardous that would have, that should have been called out on the site plan originally from the beginning. And after the meeting with the arborist, we identified, going into my notes here, I got it called out on the landscape sheet. About 168 inches of caliper replacement. So in the zoning code, it states, you know, if you remove a 24-inch tree, for example, you can replace it with a 24-inch tree, but a landscaped nursery is not likely to carry a 24-inch tree. So, well, really, three times 24. So you'd replace it with a similar caliber. And so we revised the landscape plan, and that's what's in front of you tonight to meet the, to meet that caliper requirement for the legal trees being removed. We've also added, there is some plans for Home State Bank to do some sort of community feature piece. There's, it has not been added to any design yet. So it could look something different, but we've left some open space in that particular area for when the city pays trail and that bench or other kind of green space area gets added. Those trees will have to be removed. I'm not a landscape architect, but to generalize the vegetation that's being planted is mostly north of the creek is going to be more like opaque evergreen type trees. And then we fill in the areas that are outside of the sanitary easement where we don't want to put any trees with the remaining caliper requirement as required by the tree ordinance check. That's kind of a quick summary. I guess I don't have much else to add from an engineering standpoint, but I'm here happy to answer any questions, staff and the commission.
And I'll just, I'll add, just so the commission and the audience is aware, under Chapter 151.06, Removal Trees and Stomps, dead or diseased tree removal on private property is permitted per your tree ordinance. And it states, the owner or person in possession of private property shall remove any trees constituting a hazard to life or property or trees harboring insects or disease which constitute potential threat to other trees within the city located on private property of the city. So essentially, the involvement of the arborist, we determined trees that were either ash trees, appeared to be diseased, hollowed, or otherwise inhibited by, I guess, malformations, or trees that were leaning substantially, had removed or had exposed root systems near the creek waterway that's in the bottom of this trench. And essentially, I attempted to identify trees that we likely would have deemed as hazardous, doing our best to understand that it's very difficult to 100% positively identify those trees after they've been cut to four-foot stumps. And then the other item that I wanted to also add to Trent's presentation is the trees that were marked as to be protected were intended to serve the purpose of the type B buffer between a commercial lot and a residential lot, between the townhomes and the commercial property of State Bank. So that's kind of the purpose and why these trees were of importance beyond the fact that, you know, we have a tree ordinance that requires approval approvals and that kind of thing.
Okay. Is there any public citizens present that would like to comment?
Yes, there is.
Should start with name and address.
My name's Scott Borwick, and I live at 116 Hickory Way. I have a property just behind New Bank. My wife and I looked at that in September. We made an offer in October and we closed in November. So about six weeks after we moved in, the tree removal kind of started. I have to be honest, we bought this property because of the privacy, the tree line. I mentioned I just moved there, but I've been in Polk City for 30 years. I've served on a lot of boards, committees. I worked on the fire department for 20 years. And like all of you, you're my neighbors too, you know, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing to be a part of this. My comments aren't directed really as a malice or anything like that towards anybody or any individual. I just have a concern. The trees started coming down on the Friday before the 18th, and I reached out to one of the councilmen and said, hey, do you know what the plans are for this? Directly behind my property, as I look out my patio door, there's a pin, and that's the property state. And from that pin all the way to Broadway is what the bank owns. To the left is what the city owns. And the city came through, my understanding is a year ago, and cleaned up the trees that had been damaged from geration. So there's a lot of really tall standing trees there, and it's cleaned up, looks pretty good. Kimberly had the other lot before they sold it to the bank, and I think their agreement was, you've got to clean this up. I understand that. But if you look at that pin and you look to the right, look to the left, it's two distinct, different looking properties now. All the light from Casey's, from the bank, noise. I mean, we just lost a ton of coverage and a ton of foliage there. I saw the new site plan, and I can tell they're going to put a lot of work into it. I'm sure someday it's going to look beautiful. It looks like most of the trees that are going to be planted are on the other side of that creek. Not necessarily in that 30-foot buffer zone that was supposed to be protected along all of our townhomes. So I guess my reason for being here is, you know, it's crazy how emotional, you know, trees can be, but they are in several neighborhoods in this area. This project was probably approved a year before it started, and so you guys moved on to other projects. But somebody dropped the ball there, somebody should have been watching out. And, you know, it was on Thursday, I think, when the last tree was cut down, even though on Monday, you know, the engineers and the developers knew about it. That didn't cut, but that didn't stop anybody from cutting trees down. So I honestly feel my property value, and I feel like I paid a premium because I just moved in there. But I feel my property values have actually gone down now. I would not pay today what I paid back then. And that was only three months ago. So you guys are my voice, so I know you're going to take this to the council. And I just want to express my concerns, and I hope someday it's a beautiful piece of property. And, you know, I bought it as an investment for myself and my family, and I hope someday it turns into that. But as of right now, it's not an investment, I probably lost one. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Ben Jensen with J-Corp 3611 Northeast Circle in Ankeny. So I'm the general contractor on the job. So just wanted to apologize for the mistakes that happened. Wish that we did a better job overseeing the tree clearing and wish that this was something simpler to resolve. Can't go back and fix anything, but just wanted to be here to say I'm sorry. We'll do what we can to fix it and I.
I'm Dawn Borwick, 116 Hickory Way. My husband Scott said a lot of things that I would support and reiterate as some of my comments. One of the things that, you know, just as, just a point of reference is, when we moved there, probably every person we talked to said, are you sure you're going to move? Why would you move with a bank right there? And we assured them that the bank was going to be a good neighbor to us. And we said, if the bank tries to, the city will. We feel confident the city is going to be there to protect that. And unfortunately, both things failed. So I am going to make a request to this commission, and that is, I've been associated with multiple very large-scale, multimillion, 50, 60, 70 million dollar construction projects. One of the things that you can do to ensure that we can have some confidence in this project on the second go-round is to require a performance bond of Home State Bank. And I don't know if you have considered that. If you're not familiar with a performance bond, it is a bond that is issued by perhaps a insurance company. It's from the bank to the city. And if they do not fulfill their obligation with this site plan, or if even if they fulfill the obligation in the plantings, but then don't care for them. If they don't water them, they don't nurture them. In three to five years, if you get a three to five-year performance bond, you can come in there and you can replace those plantings, the trees, the shrubs, the natural grasses. You will have money for the labor to take care of them. And you have protection as the city. We have some confidence as residents, and it's probably a win-win for everyone. Performance bonds are not expensive, but they are a good insurance policy for you as the city. So I think, you know, everybody's admitted that it's been a failure. That first step was a failure. But now that we have a second opportunity, I would just ask that you put some due diligence behind that and ask for a performance bond. So I have to thank you.
Eric Cockenberry, Home State Bank, 101 East Bridge Road. Echo a lot of things that have been said here in the planning zoning. I discussed with council last week when we met as well, that, you know, clearly we're making a large investment in the community. We're here to be part of the community, bring jobs, bring a good corner piece to the community of what we're trying to build and accomplish and do. And as I mentioned to the council, I'll tell the same to you that neighbors and everybody, we moved in town as everybody is our customer, and we believe that. And we're, you know, the Home State Bank and the Garth family who owns Home State Bank has been a huge conservation family throughout their entire generation of what they do. So I can't give you anything besides the word of Home State Bank that we're going to be here, we're going to make that property staple of that corner, a beautiful piece. I mean, the planting is, is over 80 trees and 80 shrubs. And I mean, it's, it's a huge piece of property. It's a very unique property, two and a quarter acres. There, it's really a one-acre little site. And we're been planning the whole time to spend that other acre on a space for the community to build something out to do that. So I know today that doesn't give the neighbors assurance of what that future is. You know, that bike trail is a big piece of where that comes into play. But that is our dedication to the community and to conservation and to how things work. And, you know, things should have been done in reverse, mark the trees out, get approval. There's no doubt that should have been the case. And I can't go back and fix that, but the site plan moving forward, I think it's going to be beautiful, it's going to be a space we're trying to invite the community into to be part of. So we're, we're not going anywhere in the community, we're going to be here for a long time. And we want the community coming to our space. Thank you for your time, consideration. Apologize again on behalf of what happened. Home State Bank is dedicated to making it right through our contract agreement with us.
Thank you.
I will add, for the commission's knowledge, at the last council meeting, Home State Bank had an agreement to complete in nearly, in the amount of 100, nearly $150,000 for completion of the site plan amendment, or the site plan improvements. And as part of that, there was a number for this site plan amendment included in that agreement to complete. Jenny Coffin currently possesses or has cashed already the checks associated with that agreement to complete. And should Home State Bank fail to complete their site plan improvements, those checks would be used for completing the site plan improvements. And Polk City code would allow, should the developer or property owner not care for or maintain planting trees, trash enclosures, monument signs, whatever those improvements may be in accordance with the site plan, the city of Polk City can issue a municipal infraction and instigate remedy of that situation. There is a process in Polk City Municipal Code allowing for and facilitating that in terms of keeping site plan compliance in place.
Does anybody else want to speak?
I know with the last meeting, it was a few people that already said.
If you have anything else or new to add? Okay. Okay.
So is there any question or discussion from the commission?
Well, this went before the city council already, no? No, they just.
So an agreement to complete was approved by the council because Home State Bank wanted to get a temporary certificate of occupancy to occupy the building on a temporary basis until the plantings can be completed. And so then, this, this is the first action on this site plan amendment for the tree remedy. And then, based on your recommendation, it would continue to counsel or we would need to reevaluate and bring before the commission once again.
Is the performance bond that was mentioned, is that very similar to what has already been decided? How it's going to be worked out?
So typically with developers, we give them the option of either an agreement to complete or some sort of bond or completion. According, or based on conversations we've had with the city attorney, they effectively serve the same purpose.
Okay. So the agreement to complete and the performance bond are very, serve the same purpose?
Yes, it's really, the difference is, is who's holding the money, who's ultimately controlling completion with a performance bond. I mean, on capital improvements projects, the city gets performance bonds from their contractors. So if one day they just decide they're never going to show up again, the city can rebid it. They can hire somebody else, and it essentially allows them to facilitate completion of that project.
Travis, this Doug Sire. I think there's a difference between completion of a project and maintenance of a project. And I believe the young lady speaking that asked for a performance bond, what she really means to me is some type of maintenance agreement. Things could die, there could be all sorts of things that happen. For a certain period of time, ensure that everything gets started, gets going, hopefully gets back to where it was.
That is a very good distinction. Doug brings up a very good point. The agreement to complete, essentially, once those trees, plantings, bushes, all that stuff are planted and established, the city would issue the checks back. So if this commission would like some sort of assurance beyond that, Doug makes a very good point that that would be something to consider, recommend to council.
We require maintenance bonds for public improvements. We do not require a maintenance bond for private improvements.
It would, yeah. I think in this case, we would probably work with the city attorney to have some sort of movement that has specific, whether it be checks, reports, whatever it may be, on those plantings for a certain period of time that the developer and the city would enter into, probably be how it would be.
Today, we, sorry, today we use the site plan as the document for private developments. If anything is different than what's on the site plan, that's what Travis was describing, that we can use the municipal infraction and move forward because they have to keep the site plan matching the document. Like, the site has to match the plan. So if trees die, it doesn't match the plan anymore. Or if they try to move the enclosure, or they try to do something different with their sign, those things don't match the site plan. So then therefore, the city has recourse to go against them on that. That's why we don't do the maintenance bond today.
In much the same way, if they were to go re-site their building, and it's no longer in conformance with the architectural standards or the approved site plan, the city would have the same recourse to say, hey, you no longer comply with the city code or the site plan. We need a remedy.
So today, the commission would ask the city council or the city to go ahead with this plan then?
So your options really would be to approve, recommend, or recommend approval as presented. You could recommend, or you could, whatever the terminology would be for recommending denial of the site plan amendment as presented. Or you could recommend approval subject to, if this commission decides that they would like staff to work with the city attorney on some sort of agreement with the developer, that is something that you could add to the motion that we could, that would be a stipulation. It would essentially, on our memo where it says no review comments, that would essentially be added as a review comment that would need to be addressed prior to continuing to counsel.
Okay. I just want to make sure I fully understand. So when you guys did the review of what was taken down and then had the arborist come in to decide what, what should have been taken out regardless, right? So we sort of subtract that from what was improperly removed. Then there were additional pieces added to the plan to recover that portion.
Correct.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
So based on the arborist's recommendation, 56 inches of trees, caliper of trees were removed illegally per your city code and per the arborist's determination of what a hazardous tree was. Then your ordinance would require 168 inches in caliper to be replaced, the developer is proposing 183 inches in tree diameter.
And do you have any comment? I think there's a question about the buffer. Are we replacing somewhat the density within the same areas with regard to the back of the houses?
So as the, as we reviewed the site plan amendment, we had the developer. There is an area where the storm sewer, or there's a culvert outlet, crossroads at the lake's platform where it gets closer to the property line that is currently barren. We had the developer add trees in that area, so it should be fairly uniform across the property line along North Prop. And then south of the sanitary sewer easement closer to the bank where the future trail would go, there is a very dense stand of proposed trees around what Home State Bank is referring to as the future green space, public space area.
Excuse me. Will the trees be pretty much the same on both sides as far as the root trees?
I do have a plan. The short answer is no, and it's based upon the area that's available. So there's less area available for the tubing. I have plenty of copies that you can have this room. So there's just a less area north of the tree line that we have available.
So that's driving why or where you decided to put them, not just because? I don't know how else to say that, but.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's at least a single line of trees across the entire North Prop. And then as space allowed, south of easement, there are anywhere from one to three rows of trees. So the, the density across the north, across the north part of the building probably isn't uniform, but there's at least two rows of trees along the entire property, whether they be back-to-back or spread on either side.
The recommendation from the arborist had two requirements for safe planting, which was a minimum of 10 feet away from the edge of the bank where it starts to go down into the actual creek bed, which is tough to define unless you, it's harder to look at from the road than when you're walking down in there where that starts. But it's clearly defined, you start walking down in there, 20 feet away from the edge of the water. So those two requirements allow for a safe root system for the trees to grow, which is where we started spreading it out. With also the consideration of healthy growth of trees, there's going to be some spacing between them or else they'll grow up together and they'll take nutrients from the other one. The other comment you made when we were there was, the trees, there are trees underneath the canopy of the taller trees that are left, that some of those were included in this discussion. Part of that, it didn't necessarily fit the code, but those trees now being removed will allow the other trees perform than what they would have before. So anything underneath the canopy of trees, you know, they're four to seven inches. The removal of those allows the nutrients to get, they suck nutrients from the trees that are remaining. Those trees should continue to flourish and get... Once again, the opposite effect of coming, of doing it the correct order, they think the outcome is a healthy area. taller, decent trees, and a lot of good variety of nutrients that are going to have good color and variety.
Justin, are you still with us?
I am, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions from commission members, or?
No. I don't have any other questions. I think the one thing I don't know, because we had a similar issue with another project, I feel like it was. We can't go back and replace the trees at the same height and all of that, right? Like, I think we all recognize that, and that's a challenge that we have in these kind of situations. I generally, even then, have a really hard time. If you know that those are not to be touched, then why are they being touched, right? I mean, that's, at the end of the day, it is the job of the developer, of the builder, to know what trees that can come down, and to make sure that that happens. But we can't undo that, right? You can't rip up a sidewalk, or you can rip up a sidewalk, you can't super glue the tree back together. But I appreciate the additional work, not only to find out what's best for that area, but also to go above and beyond the recommended or the required allowance. I do also understand the concern of, well, the first part didn't go well, so how are we sure that the second part will go well? And I appreciate that the city council and the city staff have worked to ensure that those things will happen, and that the neighbors can at least feel confident that those will be put in, even if the developer doesn't, right? I'm not overstepping or overstating that. I don't know, for our future projects, I don't know how we try to stop this from happening again, because two times in six months seems maybe a little too frequent. But I have no other questions.
Is there additional comments or a motion from the commission?
Oh, go ahead. Okay, I'd like to make a motion regarding site plan amendment review on Home State Bank dated January 12. And regarding the trees, I guess, I make a recommendation that we work with the city, and the city, and the engineering company, and the attorney to come to a conclusion that will not only replace the trees, but would nurture them and monitor them so that they stay healthy and living.
A second. Roll call?
Sires?
Yes.
Henkins?
Yes.
Vogel?
Upstein?
Bowersocks?
Yes.
Pregnant?
Okay, is that, what was the count on that, Jenny?
The motion carries with four.
Okay. All right. Item six, reports of particulars. Any comments from the council liaison?
Well, we're getting into budget season, so that's the big deal with council right now coming up. I know we have work session coming up, so that's a lot to be thinking about there. And then, we've also put out an RFP for the property at Third and Davis, looking for proposals that would be a good fit for that. So not only to just sell the property, we know it's a valuable property here in town, and to see if there are interested parties out there that might want to put something on that property that would be of benefit for our community. So is it, remind me of the due date on those?
March 18.
So once those come in, then there will be an evaluation. So again, it's not just seeing if anyone wants to buy it, but to make sure that those that do have an interest would come to us with a project that would be something that would benefit.
All right, thank you. City manager, comments?
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Staff? Any commission member comments?
No.
All right, item seven, adjourned.
I make a motion that we adjourn. You have a motion and a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everyone.